Good evening. It is, excuse me, Monday, August 12th, 2024. It is the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority meeting. Welcome. I have no opening remarks, except there are free tickets and a lot of them to the Harrisburg Senators' baseball game this Friday, August 16th. I believe it starts at 7:00.
First pitch by the mayor at 6:30.
Oh, first pitch by the mayor at 6:30. So please help yourselves to tickets. It's over by the sign in. And enjoy a little bit of baseball for the Gettysburg Community Day, I believe it is.
Or they can pick them up from Sarah during the week.
Or you can pick them up from Sarastol during the week.
Right. They'll be, actually, we're just gonna put them in the lobby window so you can come in, take as many as you'd like and hand them out.
Great.
Don't let them go to waste.
Hopefully, this will get on the air and help get those tickets out to the community. We have this evening, as we normally do, our consent agenda, approval of the minutes and other business. There are three things we do, a motion to approve the agendas presented, a motion to approve all bills and payrolls as presented, which you've received, and a motion to approve the June 10th, 2024, GBSWA business meeting minutes. So would someone on the board like to make a motion to accept these three items? Okay. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Kurt. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Not hearing any? They pass. Thank you. There's no public comment today? No public. We're gonna move straight to current business and we will start with financial updates. Charles?
Okay, we are about 76% collected in our stormwater fees and other revenue sources for the year-to-date budget, which is good news. So that brings us to 368,781 collected, currently running a $226,000 surplus year-to-date, all within our budgeted parameters and some good news.
Good. That is good. Thank you. Deb?
Yeah, I just wanted to go over the liquid cash real quick, too.
Excellent.
In the Stormwater Authority's checking account, currently just over $705,000. And in our Pliget investment account, this is restricted money for the Gettysburg Interloop Washington Street project, currently $236,000. So we have had $6,100 of interest collected on that restricted fund account with a maturity date of November 4th. So we'll get a little more interest between now and then. And right around that time is probably when we're gonna start needing to use it to pay bills. So timing on that's on track.
Charles, may I?
Oh, sure. Please.
I just saw in the checks, we paid another $2,000 for the lobbying firm.
Cozen O'Connor, Public Strategies.
Is there any progress report on our investment?
We are, so as it relates to getting, you know, a $14 million grant that we really like to, no. But it's still fairly early in that kind of process, this kind of process. And of course, we really don't have a benchmark because we've never done this before.
Right.
I would say that, and Engineer Clayball would back me up on this, we have had conversations with political folks that we generally would not have had the opportunity to put on our calendars individually or on our own. As it relates, not necessarily to stormwater, we are, have, they've guided us in the direction of an EV charging station grants, which actually is zero cost to the borough, which is the first grant I've ever seen there. There's no local match required. It's all federal government initiatives as it relates to renewable energies. The advantage to that, this is, I'm channeling Cozen O'Connor's strategies here. If you become an EV charging-friendly community, that gives you a leg up on other types of grant applications because you're meeting federal goals and objectives. So there is some positive movement from that investment, not specific to stormwater, but in the aggregate, it is, we have some, some positive outcomes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. And I will add a couple of things. Oh, Pat? You have a question? Go, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Please, did we just start it, right? I'm still learning.
Yeah, we're what, three months in? Something like that, three, four months in?
Okay. You said that was all dedicated to the project? The stormwater project?
The Cozen O'Connor?
That's the North Washington? No.
Oh, oh, right. Yes. The Pliget is restrict, all those funds are restricted to the construction costs of the GIL project.
We just put those restrictions on. Pliget didn't. Is that valid?
Correct. Those are our restrictions.
Right.
It looked like with our balance, we could have more money in Pliget.
That's exactly, great segue. Charles and I were just talking about this, that we're gonna, we're gonna move.
We're gonna add a motion perhaps later on, if you'd like.
Yeah, we're gonna, like about $400,000 from, from our cash position.
If you saw the interest rate, if you saw the interest rate on that, it is 5.41%, which is very favorable.
It's better than zero.
It's a lot better than zero.
Okay.
True. Okay. Deb? Charles, if you're finished, any questions?
Yeah, sorry. That concludes my, my comments.
Okay.
Yep. Please.
So to date, we have collected 359,000 and we have approximately 140,700 due for stormwater payments. And that is pretty much as of today. I have it collected pretty close. Mike had asked me to do a comparison from, I did it from last year to this year. From, this year, we mailed out the checks or the bills a little bit early, a week before. Sometimes they get a little closer to the first. So I did the timeframe between June 25th and August 1st.
Okay. Good.
So for 2023, in that time period, we collected $326,479. And in 2024, we collected 302, 403 with a difference of $24,000. Paid more in 2023 during the same time period. But it may have been off a week to 10 days, depending on when we mailed out those checks.
Okay. But roughly, it's roughly tracking about the same.
However, they are all paper checks. So that is all money collected in paper checks. Our PSN, where we collect that online, in 2023 was $29,000 and in 2024, it was $31,000. So a difference from paying more in 2024 of $2,007. So I don't know if we wanna look at keeping that payment software, only because, you know, we get billed and I do have the bill that we were paid, it was paid last year. I believe it was $806, but we're only collecting $30,000 out of $550,000.
But it is going up slightly.
Slightly. And the planning office maybe uses it for 100 payments. So we've just had a lot of issues connecting Freedom with them and the correct billing stuff. And we had a little bit of an issue in the beginning of the year. They changed the account numbers with some addressing issues. They were pulling old addresses. So when they updated the addresses, they pulled the most recent ones, they changed the account number. So when folks went to pay their bills, the account number for 2019 through 2023 was the same and should be, but for 2024, it got changed. So when folks went in to pay their bills, they were going into the existing account number, which couldn't pay their 2024 bill. So anyway, it's just something to think about. And I did pull a couple of deeds. I sent you guys some information on that, where it went to a pin in the Tiber. I did pull a second one that also says it's to the water, water body of the Tiber. But without having a survey, we don't know where that pin is. But I'll give you a copy of this one and I highlighted those areas for you.
Okay. Yeah, this is a follow-up. Right, right. This is a follow-up to the conversation about locations and properties vis-à-vis the Stevens Run Tiber.
And the deeds are actually referencing the Tiber, the water body.
Do they mention the word Tiber?
Yes.
Versus Stevens Run?
Yes.
That's right.
No, no Gettys Run yet. Then we knew, then we'd know it would be old. But go ahead.
It says to a water source known as the Tiber, thenceby said Tiber, south 54 and 1/8 degrees. Blah, blah, blah. So I'll get that. You guys can take that or I can give it to Mike or...
Yeah. It's in the deed because that's their property line, the middle of the Tiber.
I just wanted to give you that information and the billing information. And I can type it up and send it out as well if you guys would want it in an email.
Okay.
It'll be in the minutes, but...
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to see that. Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Pat?
Question. All the receipts we've had so far, taken advantage of the discount?
Yes, actually. So the 359,000 that's been paid so far are the folks that are still within the discount period. So that was a 2% discount during that timeframe. And I believe it's over August 15th, I wanna say.
Yeah.
And then they have till September 30th.
The stormwater fee discount is 325, 75% collected at the discount. So far, face values running above, budgeted at 15,250.
Okay. Thank you. Adam, any, anything on lean file?
It's not that time of year.
Right. It's early. Yep. Old business, engineering updates. Chad?
So aside from the, the presentation I'm gonna give you on the Lincoln Highland Johns, the only other engineering update that I wanted to tell you about is with Bream, Bream Alley Channel Wall. That project is out to bid. We've been actively answering contractors' questions with Gettysburg Municipal Authority. Of course, they're administering that contract. So we're hopeful to get some bids in place here pretty soon on that. But aside from that, there's nothing else that I have from engineering update, aside from what's on the agenda.
When you say pretty soon, is there a date that...
I don't know. Do you know the bit of... I don't know the, I don't know the date.
So GMA is...
They're administering the contract.
Right. The whole thing.
Yeah. We're just, we're tagging along with, with the wall.
Okay. So we don't even have a start date?
They just had a pre-bid meeting. I don't, I don't have a start date yet.
I, I don't anticipate it to be this year, to be honest with you. They, their, their goal is to start before the end of the year, but until they actually have contracts in place and they get, because their sewer project relies on pretty substantially-sized concrete structures and there's a, there's a delay in getting the concrete structures cast and delivered to the site.
So it's a lot of pre-cast?
It's a lot of pre, all the sewer manholes are gonna be pre-cast sewer manholes. So until they get the shop drawings through and get Monarch to create, you know, you gotta wait for the 30-day curing process. So it'll probably be next year until, if I had to guess. I mean, best-case scenario, it starts sooner than that, but more realistically, it'll be early next year.
Wow. Okay. Thank you. Ready for Lincoln?
Right into the next one.
Go ahead.
Yep. So I'm going to, right, relocate here.
Whoa, podium. Here we go. Let's hear what he sounds like here up there. Can you hear me okay?
Oh.
All right.
Awesome. Okay. So tonight, I'm gonna give you a presentation on the Lincoln and Highland Avenue master plans. I'm gonna try to keep this to about 15 minutes if I can. There's still, there's a lot to unpack here. But this is something that we talked about pretty often over the past year. So this is more kind of for the, for the general public if they wanna hear about this. What I'd like to leave with today and on your motion on your, on your agenda is authorization to start the design work on the Lincoln portion. So of course, we've got two different projects here we're looking at. We call it the Lincoln and we call this one the Highland Project. The Lincoln one, the reason why we're pushing forward isn't necessarily because that's the, the worst project we have, but we have an opportunity where we're gonna be partnering with Gettysburg Municipal Authority and Columbia Gas to share the cost in the street paving. That's why this has become a top-line item in terms of scheduling. They look like they're gonna try to start their project next year. Robbie and I just sat in a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago. They are still trying to figure that out, if it's gonna be next year or the following year. Either way, we need to get ahead of them. So that's really the ultimate goal here with this. So first thing, I'd like to give you a little bit of an idea of what, the approach of a master plan, because this is a, you know, it's a $30,000 plan here that we've, we've developed over the past year and why would you need to do this? Whenever, in the engineering world, we call it cradle to grave. Whenever you start with a project, you don't really know what the scope of the project is. Really, the goal of a master plan is to really identify what the scope is gonna be and ultimately, what's the cost of the project's gonna be. But there's a lot of things that go into that. So for instance, identifying existing issues and concerns. So one of the first things we do is Robbie and I get together. When we were looking at the Highland, it also includes Washington Street right around here, where there's a major flooding issue. So we have identified that. We know that there are several properties where a pipe goes underneath the property owner. So we identify those kind of things. So that's the first thing we do. Luckily, I'm, you know, being the engineer of record for 15 years, I've known these kind of things and I didn't have to, to retrace my steps. So I was able to jump right into the research of the existing storm drains. Again, we have a lot of this from CS Dathom, our online mapping tool, but there were some pieces of it that were incomplete. One of the things that we do is we do pipe televising. So you can see, I've just stuck a logo. We hired USG. Of course, this board was aware of, of that process with getting USG involved to try to televise these pipes and find these underground pipes that go underneath the private property owners. We prepared, prepared a draft mapping. This is the first draft mapping that we came up with. And the highlighted section show the areas that we wanted to get televised. So that's all the stuff that we got USG to televise. After we got the, the televising done and we did some field reconnaissance, then we update the mapping. Of course, I told you about the televising. And then we prepare a final sketch of what we want this thing to look like post-construction. Of course, we are coordinating with other utility companies while we do this. And to me, one of the most important items out of a master plan is to prepare a cost estimate. What are we looking at? We looking at $100,000 or we looking at $1 million? Try to get a zoom in on what that cost estimate is. So this slide shows, first, I'm gonna go over some things with Highland. As I said before, the goal isn't to authorize me to move forward with Highland. That's gonna be later, a couple of years down the road. But, so I wanna first get that out of, out of our system and then we can come back to the Lincoln. Some of the things with, with Highland, first, I mentioned there's flooding concerns. So this is a picture of Washington Street. This is Four Score Brewery right here. That whole street floods. These storm sewers literally go around in a circle. They go two different directions. Water's trying to find a path of least resistance, so to think, so to speak. So we wanted to try to address that, that issue.
Does this have anything to do with the alley behind? That would be the Dobbin House, too?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. It all goes to that. And later, in another slide, I'm gonna show you how there's a plan to potentially revise that alley system.
Okay.
So the next here is replace the failing infrastructure. We try to build for longevity. What we all know is a bunch of acronyms up here. The SL CPP, Smooth Line Corrugated Plastic Pipe. That's what we wanna use. Or RCP, which is Reinforced Concrete Pipe. We don't use that too much on borough streets, the concrete pipes. The state uses that a lot. Either one of those are very good pipes for, for longevity. The CMP, that's the one we all know fails, the corrugated metal pipes. So most of these pipes that we're dealing with are CMPs and they're failing. Also, we have the goal always, anytime we do a stormwater project, we try to replace and relocate dangerous inlets and put on bicycle-safe grates. And you can see some images here, like, like right here is a crosswalk. And this is an alley crossing right into a dangerous inlet grate. So we would relocate that, get it out of the path of the crosswalk and also not use, it's a little bit hard to see, but these are grates that a bicycle tire could easily fit into and somebody could crash one. So instead, we use proper inlet grates. And I just pulled a picture where we happen to have a bike, a part of our Gettysburg Interstate Bike Loop. The other problem out there with this project is this is a, an accurate image of the street condition. We know that, that Johns Avenue paving needs some love. So before we pave, we wanna make sure that we get the utility work done that we need to do. So I mentioned before about pipes that go under people's properties. There is a couple of issues with this pipe system. First, on the top here is this system that goes underneath of this hotel. So this is Johns Avenue, Steinware Avenue is right along here, Queen Street, just to get your bearings. There's a hotel right here. The pipe system, there's a lot of water that comes down Queen Street to a low spot right here. Pipe system goes back through private properties and back into the public system and underneath of this hotel. So we would really like to avoid those conditions if we can. We'd like to bring some new pipes out to the main street and get those pipes out from underneath the buildings, obviously. And then there's another system, again, this is the same, same system right here where the pipe goes under the hotel. We would like to bring a pipe out. This is, the yellow is proposed. Is that red? Let's go with the red. That is under the existing building. And then there is, so this is the Four Score Brewery right here. There's a pipe system that goes under there somewhere. We don't know exactly where it goes, but we don't like that condition, obviously. It also then continues under Jackie White's property, behind the Dobbin House. So again, we wanna try to abandon those old pipes and put in some new pipes that are following public right-of-ways. You might ask me why we proposed a pipe right here, which isn't necessarily following a current public right-of-way, and I'll get back to that in a minute. So here it is. Potential realignment of Court Alley behind the Dobbin House. So this is something that actually was proposed to us by Jackie White and her engineers a few years ago, maybe five years ago, quite a while ago. She would like to expand the back of Dobbin, the Dobbin House and abandon this alley. This is the Dobbin House here. This is the alley behind it. If she expanded the back of this, the Dobbin House here...
That alley's in bad shape.
It's in bad shape. And it's kinda tight. It's not, it's a sketchy intersection here. There's nothing that's great about it. But there's a stormwater pipe. And it's a significantly-sized stormwater pipe. It takes all of Steinware Phase 2, all of the water from that out past, you know, all the way up to McDonald's, pretty much. So it's a pretty good drainage area that comes to that. So if we were to abandon that alley, the last, last design that I just showed you shows a new pipe coming this way and down instead of through that alley.
So where would the alley go?
If we would be, so this picture here on the left, this is the Dobbin House on the left over here. This is looking up, hospital's right here. This is looking out the street. The alley would come right up through here. So the alley would go right through here.
Yeah, straight across.
Yeah, straight across to the hospital.
From Gettys Street.
And this picture here, you can, this is the exact same picture as this one, at a different time. Jackie has already demolished these buildings a few years ago. So this building doesn't exist in this picture, you can see. So that's where the alley would go. And that's where the proposed stormwater would go. This is looking at the opposite direction. So the hos, in this picture here, the hospital's on your left. Four Score Brewery's on the right. It's right through here. That's where that house used to exist. It's now gone. That's where we would like to put this pipe. Of course, there's a lot of things that need to go into play with that. There would have to be acquiring of easements and rights of ways, getting the borough involved, not just the Stormwater Authority with the relocation of the alley. So there's a lot of things that to discuss there, but we did identify that as the preferred path for our stormwater pipe.
And just, just one question. And the piping from there, under the existing alley as it goes north, east, that's big enough to handle all this water?
Yeah, yeah. So we are not, what Mike's talking about is we're gonna tie in right here. And this goes behind the medical centers that are over here.
Right.
And then it goes through the Fawnsworth. We are not aware of any flooding in that area. We had that issue just recently, about a couple of years ago, where we had dealt with that sycamore tree that was falling in. And we lined the stream bank there because of the erosion issue, but we aren't aware of any significant flooding issues in that.
But I guess the question is, capacity now and for the future, the pipes will be big enough to handle the runoff from Steinware Ave? I mean, when you say Steinware Avenue, that's, that's pretty impressive. And that area, you know, is that Johns Avenue? That's right in back of all the hotels and McDonald's and everything?
All of that, it's the same spot.
Yeah.
In the back of the old Wax Museum, which is ABC now, that whole parking lot goes into that, that's all the same drainage area.
Okay.
So yeah, and, and that whole drainage area currently comes to this point. And we are not aware of any flooding issues with that point. So what we'd like to try to, but as soon as you get to Washington Street, then the pipe goes from a big box culvert, it's like over four by four in, in size, down to like 18-inch pipes. So clearly, the 18-inch pipes aren't gonna carry the same amount of water as a four-by-four box. So we are proposing pretty significantly-sized pipes in these two locations here to make sure that Washington Street wouldn't flood as much in the future.
Well, we're not actually adding any, I mean, we're not actually adding any more water. We're just move, rerouting the existing flows.
Exactly. We're gonna eliminate some of those pinch points.
Right.
Exactly. Yeah, same drainage area, exact same drainage areas.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So again, so this is the, the proposed, potentially proposed alley. And then this alley could either be turned over to the property owners, abandoned. We wouldn't really care, to be honest with you, as long as we got this alley in the future. And this pipe would, we would continue up to Johns to about this point with this project. There's some other projects to do up further, but we're kind of separating that because this project keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger and we kinda gotta stop it somewhere. So we're proposing to stop it right here where that hotel is, to try to get those pipes out from any of that hotel and stop there. It does include at that elbow with the picture that I showed you of the bad inlets, we are gonna be trying to redo all of those things. The other thing with increasing the pipe size here, we can make it deeper. Part of the issue right here is that there's just no gravity to get those things to drain. So if we go deeper pipe, then we can increase the size of all that system there at that alley as well. Now I'm gonna switch gears onto Lincoln and then I'll come back to the cost estimates at the end. And again, this is what, the one I'm hoping to get authorization to proceed with the design phase on. This is just an aerial image. So this is old Harrisburg Road here. Lincoln has actually two pieces. There's, there's the state highway piece and then there's the borough piece of East Lincoln. The storm drain goes down both. At the end of the day, the borough is only responsible for paving this piece of it, but Stormwater Authority is responsible for the stormwater pipes in both the state highway and in the borough road. That's something that we can have a separate discussion about if you want to, but we definitely own those pipes. And you can see all the way over here, we even have an, A, we have an alley up on this side and that's where we are looking to start this project. And then we're going all the way down to Stevens Run. Originally, this project was just gonna be East Lincoln, but we started pulling back the layers of the onions and realized that we just can't do this without replacing the pipe all the way down to Stevens Run for a couple of reasons. There's some elevation issues. But at the end of the day, it's also a corrugated metal pipe, that piece that connects to Stevens Run, and it made just a lot of sense to do the whole thing.
Does that pipe come out under the bridge?
It comes out before the bridge, on the northeast corner, on the northeast side of the bridge, right before, you can see the pipe.
On the downstream side of the bridge.
And I believe I have a picture in here somewhere. I'll show you.
Okay.
There's all of the same other goals. I'm not gonna repeat myself, but it's the same goals with replacing the, the bad corrugated metal pipes with new ones, bicycle-safe grates, avoiding private properties. I'm gonna get into that with another slide. But again, the bold one here is, the goal here is to coordinate with other utilities. We have Columbia Gas wanting to do a project out there and Gettysburg Municipal Authority, so now's the time to do it. Again, avoiding through private property. So we have two locations in this project. The first one is right at the bend is his old Harrisburg Road. Right at that bend, the stormwater pipes used to cross this property. They don't even really do that now, even though these pipes still exist. This is the proposed plan. What we're looking to do is run those pipes straight down Lincoln. So instead of having it come down this way, it'll go straight down Lincoln. That's one of the solutions.
Did you televise that?
We couldn't get through this one.
Okay.
We couldn't get through this one. But we're pretty, we're pretty confident that it's there. Of course, Robbie knows firsthand of replacing this.
Somewhere, somewhere, there's a blind box across from the campus door.
We think it's somewhere in here.
Yeah, right to, right, yeah, right to the left of the red line, right there. There's a, there's a blind box in the grass strip. We tried to plant a tree there and found the lid.
Yeah, because that old pipe is actually part, it's actually on two properties.
Yes.
Starts on the western property, goes under the wall at the driveway, and ends up in the old Smith property.
Yes.
Through the bottom of him into the alley. And then goes down the alley that doesn't exist.
Yep.
Except on paper.
Yeah, it's, it's both of these two properties right here that John's talking about. So yeah, both of those two, there's probably not any easement, easements that we aware of. So it'd just be a matter of extinguishing the pipe, returning their property back to grass, and they take owner, they take back ownership of their property. At that point, the pipe would go down the street.
Funny you should, that's my question. When you say extinguish the pipe, we, we're abandoning a lot of pipes here. Are we proposing to pull those pipes out of the ground, or are we just going to let them lay there and rot?
Yes. And what we try to do is the best we can with televising is to see if there's anything else connected to it. Sometimes there's floor drains and sump pumps and those kind of things. That's why we do televising. And we can't always tell that, but we try to do the best we can.
Okay.
So the other one, sorry, this is Victor down here. And this is, help me with the street name, Rob.
Barlow.
Yep, and Four Streets here. So there's another pipe that crosses over. There's a little alley system right here that we have right of way for. And the borough just replaced that pipe, so it's brand new SLCPP. That's good news here. But this piece right here goes through private properties. We think it's a bad corrugated metal pipe. We would like to eliminate that if we can. And you can see the proposed drawing. We would like to, instead of having it come right through here, you can see the dash line goes through here. We would like to take it over to Four Street and then down. Since we're replacing all of the other pipe on Four Street, it makes sense to do this at the same time. This is just kind of reiterating what I just explained. So this is again, starting at the alley at the very beginning, we have the state highway portion. Existing and proposed is basically the same alignment. The existing one, though, however, turned and went right, just like John was saying here. We're going to continue it to go east with the proposed alignment, all the way down to Four Street. Then it turns and goes down Four Street, and basically the same alignment, and then connects in. The other reason why we can do this, there's two water lines on that street currently. Gettysburg Municipal Authority has two water lines. They're going to be consolidated. They're going to be abandoning one of the old ones and moving everything over to the new one. And that'll allow us to be able to build a bigger pipe here and get it deeper to be able to catch everything.
Okay, so capacity is an issue here.
It is, it is, yeah. The pipe that you can see right here is, Mike, you were asking where this comes out into the stream. So this is Four Street. This is north up on Four Street. And this is Little Charter School right here at the, at the corner. Our pipe comes out right here. It's pretty high. It goes above all of the sewer stuff on, the sewer and water on the street. So we would like to get that below the sewer and water at that location.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Do you need to?
To be able to get the twenty-four inch pipe in, yes. Because it's barely any cover on it.
Flood. Right, I was going to say.
Well, that's something that we were, that's something that we're looking into. That's something, if you go, it's a certain point, John's point. So a certain point, if you go deeper with the pipe and the floodwaters happen, then it's just a matter, matter of head wall. Then it didn't matter how big of a pipe.
The head pressure's not going to allow it to.
Exactly. You didn't matter how big of a pipe you put in, if you bury the pipe below the flood elevation. It's definitely something that we'll have to consider when we get to the design phase.
Yeah, I lived out there a long time. I know how that floods. That's our place.
Yeah. And it really, so the bridge and the sewer pipe and everything kind of acts like a little bit of a, a stormwater facility. It floods kind of on the north side of, right along Victor there. That property floods. And then this acts as a control structure. Do you know if it ever overtopped Four Street?
Yes.
Has it?
It has.
Okay, that's good to know, too.
It flooded the, well, actually, it backed up, well, at least in ninety-six, it backed up the whole way from Dowtown, the whole way to Water Street.
And that flooded Water Street, yeah.
Yeah, Steve Schwartz's property down.
Yeah, down below there?
Yeah, well, the stormwater was up like into the first floor of that house, because that house way too low. That house should have never been allowed to be built there. But it was. And then everything, well, actually, Tim Good, who's, was on the municipal authority, I guess he's not on anymore.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
But he lived on Victor Street, and all those houses were flooded. And the bridge was underwater. It was back up, it was back up between Barlow and Lincoln Avenue. And basically, where John Eline lives and the guy that owns a pizza shop down there on Four Street, they were all.
Got you. So yeah, I mean, that's something certainly we're going to be taking into consideration during the design phase. We are proposing a twenty-four inch pipe. That's a squash that, that exists out there. So it's.
Because la- last Tuesday, that pipe was underwater.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, that had to be.
Learn it. Because I know that runs.
Yeah, last Tuesday night, it was almost up to the bridge deck.
Right.
And it doesn't help that there's a sewer line on downstream.
That blocks.
That blocks stuff and backs up if you don't keep it cleaned out.
I'll make note of that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that's a, that's a real challenge. That's a real challenge.
Comes down from La Fever property.
Yep, I'm familiar with that pipe. We've been out there many a times.
We are familiar with that pipe.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's see. So again, this is the proposed drawing. Same thing I just showed you on a plan. Into the cost estimate. So here's where we get sticker shock. These are expensive projects. The Lincoln's on the top, Highland's on the bottom. Lincoln, we're looking around fifty-five thousand for the design, about four hundred thousand for construction. Now, one contingency that's in here, this ten percent, makes a little bit more with Hy, sense with Highland, because we're not exactly sure when we're going to build that. We always stick an inflation factor in there, because if it's going to be five or ten years down the road. If we end up doing this next year, ten percent's more than what we need for that. It'll be more like three percent. So there's a little bit of, of cushion here, I believe, in that twenty-eight thousand dollar line item. The rest of it, we're basing this off of that master plan that I just showed you. So you're looking at close to a half a million dollars for the Lincoln project, and for Highland, closer to three hu, three quarter million.
Now, this is where I say, back to the Cosen question. You know, they, at least in the, the calls that I've been on, they've proposed certain things that they're hearing. They're, they're proposing, when I say propose, it's, it's not a done deal by any means. But there's money out there for stormwater projects. And that's where their value is, introducing us to the people who know what the next steps are in that process. Because, as you know, you know, if we're feeling good about having seven hundred and five thousand dollars or nine hundred thousand total, it's not going to touch this, because this is just one of many projects that we have, you know, in the, in the works. So right now, you're just asking for Lincoln.
Just, just to start the design, yes.
Okay.
Until we would get into the construction, and actually, maybe I'll just jump ahead to the next. So this is what it looks like in the, in the big picture. And this is everything Mike's saying, is this is just one little project and all of these different things that we have, right? So I try to put this as much as I can on, on paper, so that this isn't just stuck in Chad's head here all the time. But currently, I talked to Charles about this. This is the amount of money that we had at the time, whenever we developed this master plan a month ago. Every year, we add about three hundred thousand. So if you add this number to three hundred thousand, you get around seven hundred and seventy-one thousand. And then at the end of each year, the balance adds another three hundred thousand. That's the way this chart works. And then it subtracts everything that we're going to use that year. So we're starting next year at seven seventy-one. If we do the Lincoln design at fifty-five thousand, we think this Bream Alley, we estimated that around one hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Of course, I noted earlier in today's meeting that that's out the bid, so we should know prices on that soon. And then we have our Gettysburg Interloop Project. We're going to have a motion on your agenda, later on your agenda, to discuss increasing that contribution from two thirty to the three thirty. If we use the three thirty, worst case scenario, we have enough money to spend, to, to do all of the projects for next year. And then if you add that to the following year, then that's whenever you start seeing it gets pretty low. If we, one of the things in the master plan that I am not a hundred percent sure of, and I would be open to some discussion on what is the next project after we get past Lincoln. We have this little long curb cut that we would like to do at some point. But the next big projects then are Highland or Chambersburg Street. If, and I could, I could be persuaded either way of which one of those is the, the higher priority. They both need done. To, for Highland, we need to get ahead of Columbia Gas. They want to replace all of the gas lines and all of Colt Park at some point. The Chambersburg Street, of course, we know that there's a, a, a failure out there. We're doing a Gethysburg Interloop Project to set up the solution to that. One of the things I would like to do is next year is revisit that master plan. We do have an idea of what we want to do there. Once we're done with the Gethysburg Interloop Project, I would like to revisit that. That happens to also, just two weeks ago, we finally got the green light from the state to start the design of the Gateway Connectivity Project. So the Gateway Connectivity Project actually ties into the Chambersburg Street project. There, the, the storm drains on the square run down and right alongside the, the Gettysberger. So the solution there, they tie together. So when, as we're designing the one, we should be looking at the Chambersburg Street at the other, because we want to marry up the designs. So again, I'm, I'm looking ahead at a couple of these things. I'm also looking at the America Two Fifty. We don't want to do any construction here. The good, you know, part of the saving grace is we wouldn't have any project or any money to do these projects if we didn't wait a year. There's just three hundred and eighteen thousand wouldn't pay for, you know, these, these Highland and Johns and Chambersburg Street constructions thing.
So we just decided we're not going to do anything in twenty-six, twenty-seven?
The idea is to avoid construction as much as we can in twenty twenty-six.
I mean, I.
Yeah, there's going to be a boatload of events that year.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be a good look to have a bunch of torn up roads.
Okay.
Reality is, it's not going to be perfect. We're not going to, you know, there might be some projects. If we end up doing the Lincoln project towards the end of next year, that might go into twenty twenty-six. But we're going to try to, we're trying to avoid the year twenty twenty-six. You know, when we do the Welcome Center, we're hoping to get all of that done before the year of twenty twenty-six, those kind of things.
Pat? Can you go back one slide?
One slide here, yep.
Okay, so we're doing these projects. The priority is pretty much dictated by Gas Works and GMA projects. We're trying to coordinate that.
Yeah, and we don't have to do it with them, but we can share the cost of paving if we do.
That's where I'm headed. If there are cost savings because of coordination, would it be possible to have a line item there just to make that point?
Yeah, and so to be clear, none of this includes any paving. This is for stormwater work. So we could add.
Total cost?
Yeah, there's paving on top of that that typically the borough contributes to.
That should be on there, then.
Yes, well, or, I mean, I guess we could put it on this one, just so you can see it, but that's a borough cost typically. It's a, it's kind of helping save the borough some money.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean? So I could show you that.
Liquid fuels money.
And there's cur, there's, that, this does include some curb and sidewalk, and there's an argument on, you know, whether that should be a borough expense or should be a Stormwater Authority if we're placing that, you know, as part of a pipe project. There's a lot of different things here we can split, split hairs on, but there are paving expenses, to Pat's point, that aren't shown on here. So I can show those, you know, and show some of the savings that, doing this now versus later. I think the other, part of the other, you know, just a good government thing, if you don't replace your corrugated metal pipes under brand-new paving, and then they start to fail, and then you're cutting up brand-new paving, it's just a bad look. So there's that.
It's a waste of money.
Yeah, big time. So bad. But I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out is interconnectivity to the other parts of the projects and the, the cost sharing. I guess since we're only one part of it, we don't have to be the overall thing, but it'd be nice to know that, you're saying splitting hairs, I take that as some type of division responsibility or.
There absolutely will be. Just like we do a memorandum of understanding, we'll have to have something like that. We will try to do the best we can, identify all the costs. Columbia Gas is going to share some of the costs. GMA is going to share some of the costs. The borough will share some of the costs. There's curb ramps and sidewalks that are going to get replaced. Columbia Gas is going to be mostly under the sidewalk.
That's good.
There's a street that has going to get repaved, two streets in this case. If none of them are doing any work on Four Street, let's say, and we're the only ones on Four Street, then that cost would be mostly on us. But all of Lincoln's going to get repaved, so that'll be shared by all three parties. So we'll have to, we'll have to split out all of those divisions of work, absolutely.
Okay.
This, all, alls I'm talking about today is the budget that would be coming out of you guys' budget, not necessarily any of the paving costs.
Okay. Well, for, speaking for myself, to know what comes out of our budgets, it's nice to know how much is being coordinated with the other.
Sure.
Providers here.
Yep.
I mean, that's, that's a nice thing to know.
Yeah.
What, because the project is not four hundred and sixty-one. It's probably nine hundred and sixty-one, I don't want, at the end of the day, or eight hundred and sixty-one, so.
Okay, so, and to be.
That'd be good to know.
Okay. I'll, I'll follow up.
I mean, we're talking about estimates here, so this is.
Yeah, and, and they're, they're doing a lot of, of work on areas of the borough that's not associated with our project, too. So they'll be paving on the state highway more than we will. They'll be paving on Stratton Street and is it, the alley, Hartzell Alley. So those, their pieces of the paving will have to get separated, but we can do the math.
Right. Chad, I'm, I'm mindful of the time here. So I know we want to authorize a motion, I think, for Lincoln Avenue.
For the design.
For the design for that. Is the, are we ready to?
I had one last slide, Mike, and this is just kind of a, a quick recap. This is just some of the dates I was telling you about. The Highland Johns, we're looking at wait until twenty twenty-seven, construction maybe in twenty-eight. The Lincoln, we're looking to, to start now with construction next year, depending on Columbia Gas. And as I mentioned earlier, we need to be mindful of these other projects. And the, the, the eight hundred pound gorilla here is the wall ownership. That's a six million dollar project that is not included. I wanted to make sure that that wasn't being noted, that this master plan does not include a six million dollar wall replacement project.
Right.
So I just, I'll conclude with that.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's very thorough. Thank you. All right. Any questions? Okay, here is the motion at hand. A motion to authorize the engineer to begin the design and engineering of the Lincoln Avenue project. And Chad, can you remind us how much that is?
Again, fif-
Five thousand.
Fifty-five, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? Someone like to make that motion?
I'll sort of move.
Thank you, Joe.
Second.
That's like.
Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Not hearing any. It passes. Thank you. I think we're to the inner loop?
Yes.
Do you want me to start, Charles?
Um, sure, if you like. Want to get into that, or? Sure. So, so included in your packets was an email. The last page of that email included, I'm trying to regroup here. It included the costs associated with the bidding of the, the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B project. Of course, we know that that project includes a Gettysburg Municipal Authority pipe and a Stormwater Authority pipe. The bids came in somewhere around four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for each of those components, which was significantly more, more than two hundred thousand dollars more than we had estimated on this project. So we're working with the contractor to try to come up with a new staging program, uh, plan for traffic control, to reduce some of the traffic control costs, but that's really the only line item that we can cut. The rest of it, we're kind of stuck. We have to, we have to do it this way. There's really no other ways, ways to do it. The only other option for the borough, aside from the borough eating the whole cost here, is to have some more of the share of that cost, of that project with the two authorities. Currently, the Stormwater Authority's in for two thirty, and the Gettysburg Municipal Authority is in for two twenty-five. The idea is to increase both of those by one hundred thousand from two thirty to three thirty. And for the storm, or from GMA, from two twenty-five to three twenty-five, I can't speak for GMA if they would be agreeance to this or not. Their meeting's next Monday, where they're going to be considering this. That would still, if, if you were in at three thirty, that would still leave the balance from approximately four seventy-five to three thirty, left by, to, to be borne by the borough. So that's really the skinny. I know I made that pretty, pretty high level there. I didn't get into the weeds too much with you. But we've talked about this project pretty much every month for, or every other month, I guess, for a couple of years now.
Is, is there any chance the price will go up again, once we authorize this increase?
The only, we're, we're in a pro, process right now of developing contracts with York Excavating. That's the low bidder here. Once a contract's in place, they can't just arbitrarily change. There's no more estimates needed to be given. That being said, I don't know if I've ever done a project in Gettysburg where we didn't find something underground. So there always is the chance of a change order. We do the best we can to televise everything and try to avoid that as much as we can. So I feel fairly confident that we're going to end up right around that price. Again, we're not getting any more estimates or bids, but there's always a chance for a change order.
But there is. But, there is a contingency in here. Right? There are contingencies in here.
No, at this point, we have a bid from a contractor.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we have a bid from a contractor, these are, these are real numbers. The, the, there is a bit of, uh, and, and the reason why I say it was between four and a quarter and fi, and four-fifty on that last page of that email, if you're looking at it, uh, for the storm drains, is because we don't know exactly where we're gonna hit yet for the boring. And once we bore onto the railroad tracks, we bid it two ways. We bid it completely with no rock and we bid it with all rock. So, it's gonna be one of those, one or the other. So, we're gonna save one of those two. If we only save the no rock, we don't save as much money. If we don't hit any rock, then we save a little bit more money. So, that is the one thing that has a bit of a contingency maybe per se, if you want to call it that, but that's, that's really the only thing. At this point, it's, it's an actual contracted amount.
What's defined as rock in that?
Yeah.
Is that the contractor's decision?
No.
Is it rock and what's in it?
We'll have an inspector there, there's, there's written parameters. It's, are, always an argument. We were able to work it out with Stratton Street and get it pretty close. Our contract, our estimators pretty much agreed with the, with the contractors, but there's a written description of what we consider rock. There's ripable rock, there's pourable rock, I mean, there's a lot of different written descriptions. So, yeah, we follow some standards, it's not like we're just, your point's valid.
There's a difference between red shale and granite.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
A hundred percent.
And what did they find in Stratton Street?
Mostly, mostly shale.
Yeah, I would, I would expect that.
And I would expect that at Washington Street too.
Right.
And ended up, we ended up agreeing on fifty-fifty on Stratton Street, was exactly what we paid.
Pat had a question.
But, yeah, it's more of a, my memory of when we talked about, uh, providing from the stormwater authority, two hundred and thirty thousand is that that was what we were providing and that others would pick up any extra costs. So, this seems to run counter to what we agreed to the last time we had this discussion.
Yes, because the amount of, uh, overestimate was considerable.
I understand that, but my understanding was somebody else would take that up. And we would, we, we were throwing in two hundred and thirty thousand period in the statement.
What's the borough throwing in?
So, I don't have the exact numbers on, in front of me, but I'm gonna say that it's gonna be closer to four or five hundred thousand. With the total project. And that, and that, that includes a lot of different things. That includes all of the, the design, that includes inspection, that includes, um, the, oh, the differences between the actual bid cost and the contract, or, and the, the contributed cost. That includes, we have two other phases of this project where, uh, we had to put the sidewalks back. And those are gonna get done next year with CDBG and C-two-P-two money. Whatever those don't ca, cover, the borough will pick up those. So, I don't have an exact figure, but I think it's gonna be close to half a million.
So, yeah, but, so this would be another hundred thousand on our budget?
Well, this is consid, this is part of your estimates, right? Part of the, um, information you just sent us, you just showed us?
Yes, this include, that, that capital improvement plan included a three-thirty. Now, it would be a hundred thousand dollars better if we went back to the two-thirty.
Right.
It's completely up to you guys.
GMA is aware that we've decided they're gonna put another hundred in?
Yeah, they're aware of it, uh, they haven't approved it yet, but the request is in.
Yeah, Mark, the, the email thread that you guys got in your packets included the whole discussion back and forth with Mark Geis. He was made aware same day that we got, we got bids on this, which was, my initial email here was July third. So, we've been talking about this for a little over better part, part of a month and a half now.
I, I think we looked at this as a shared burden and the borough picking up most of it. And GMA and us throwing in another hundred thousand just to, just to help out. I think you're right, Pat, we said, that's it. You know, we're stopping at two-thirty. But, this thing has, has grown considerably. And, um-
It's gotta get done this year.
Right.
It's-
Because-
There is no kick in the can anymore.
The money runs out.
Right. Yeah, we'll lose the CDBG piece of this if we don't use it in the next year.
Right.
And we're confident that, uh, GMA will kick in another hundred?
We don't know.
I know they're meeting next week, but-
Yeah, we don't know.
Can we make our hundred contingent on them? Matchen it?
We could. At this point, and-
Also want to think about protecting the borough a little bit here as well.
Yeah, my, my thought is that, is that, um, you know, to be a good, being a good partner in here, a hundred thousand dollars, um, I choked on it, but, um, I think it's part of, of just working together. In the past, GMA has ponied up when we've, when we've run into issues like in Braem Alley, I, I believe. So, at, at this point, I would say, we need to take the lead. The borough has not agreed to this, have, have they, Charles?
Yeah, the borough's always, is, is gonna pick up the, the balance, whatever that number is.
Okay, they've agreed to that? The Borough Council?
In principle, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we're, they're gonna have to, or we're gonna lose the CDBG money. So, it's, that, that's, that's the big piece of this, and you don't want to not use the CDBG money.
That's right.
It has-
So, we're over a barrel-
Right.
About the other funding that has to come down the pike.
And, and I'll say that, so, from the engineer's perspective, you know, I'm the, the science and math, the numbers guy. Who is responsible for this? I've had, been asked a lot of different times, you know, can you give us a good share of the division here? And, and it's really hard for me to do because, you know, the, the, this project started because we wanted to replace sidewalks for the Gettysburg Interloop. So, that's a borough project, but in order to be able to do that, we had to move a stormwater pipe.
Right.
Well, if we're gonna put the stormwater pipe in, we need to fix the Chambersburg Street issue, so now that's a stormwater authority proj, project. Right, and then, of course, to move the stormwater pipe, then we found out that we had to move the water line. And it's really hard to, Gettysburg Municipal Authority is certainly a hundred percent benefiting from a brand-new water line, but they wouldn't have necessarily been doing this now. That water line isn't necessarily leaking, um, if it wasn't for Gettysburg Interloop or the Chambersburg Street pipe that moves in to, right? So, it's hard to say exactly who is most responsible. It was really a, a harder thing to do for me to be able to come up with percentages and say, this is what this person's responsible for and this is what this person's responsible for, because it's kind of a political matter. And that's why I was trying to estimate that the nearest hundred thousand, because that's the best I could do, to be honest with you, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's sort of back to partnership.
So, Mike, I'll, I'll move this motion as it's written on the agenda.
Okay.
I'd actually, would probably revise it a little bit.
Okay.
Are you gonna revise it?
Yeah. So, I'm, I'll just read it. Motion to amend the memorandum of understanding for construction work on Gettysburg Interloop Phase B-two-B between the Gettysburg Municipal Authority, Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority and the Borough of Gettysburg pertaining to the reimbursement by the Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority of construction expenses in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars associated with stormwater components of the project. With such approval of the amended memorandum of understanding being contingent upon the separate approval of the revised funding allocation by GMA of three hundred and twenty-five thousand and all remaining costs being borne by the Borough of Gettysburg. Just to make a little bit clearer.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that is a little clearer, thank you.
A little.
A little clearer, yeah. Okay. You just heard the proposed motion.
Out of the presses.
Right. Any questions, comments? Okay, do I hear a motion to ex, accept this? Go ahead.
Well, you want me to move, move the-
Move this motion, please.
Adam's amended motion.
Motion, right. Second? I guess I'll second it. Any other comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstaining? Okay, it passes. Thank you, everyone. Hopefully, our GMA colleagues will agree and put their hundred thousand dollars extra into the project. New business, the budget.
Yeah, there's a-
Go ahead. Charles?
Yeah, ca, uh, capital expense request that, um, Robbie Harbaugh is, uh, requesting purchase of a walk-behind skid loader. Currently, we, we need this piece of equipment to do, uh, routine annual maintenance in, uh, in Stephen's Run. Currently, we are renting this piece of equipment and, and given the, the amount of use that it will you get, it would probably behoove us just to own one and give us the flexibility to use it whenever and wherever and whenever we need to. Robbie, do you want to add any other points to that? And this is not, um, going to happen, this is-
No.
This would appear as a proposed budget item.
Right.
Well, you, you all should have pictures of three different manufacturers. There is a fourth one, but I think that one's gonna be well out of the water. I'm not even probably gonna look at that one. But, these three we're, we're looking at, and I don't have final figures for the state contract yet for these three pieces of machinery, but, at, at last month, at the last meeting you had, Mike had mentioned about the cleaning of the Tiber, especially down by the bike bridge that we did. And so, we wound up renting a walk-behind skid loader, because our skid loader that we have now currently will not fit under bridge structures, which we need to get underneath the bike bridge to clean out the caddy nine tails. So, I searched around prices for rentals, um, and actually, the, the cheapest I found was seven hundred and forty dollars, from Wyatt's Excavating. That's where we actually take our brush to. And, uh, the other rental companies that have them were like twelve hundred, thirteen dollars, thirteen hundred dollars a week. So, we rented it for a week and it worked out really nice. I don't know if anybody saw what we did down there, but-
Did a great job.
It, it worked out well. So, I was thinking about maybe purchase, trying to purchase one that we don't have to worry about renting when it's available from Wyatt, um, because it's not always available from Wyatt. It just happened to be this week that we did it, it was available. He has a landscaping business, so he uses it constantly. So, I, I would, I would like to know if the stormwater would like to, me to entertain for-
Rob, what, what's the ballpark price of one of these, uh, pieces of equipment?
Thirty-nine thousand to forty-one thousand.
Okay. What brand are you running now?
A Bobcat.
And can you get, can, can you use, uh, these machines? Can you buy some other add-ons?
Ken, yes. Yeah, actually, this machine, some of our, the Bobcat and, and, well, actually, all three of them, you can get plates, adapter plates that we can use our skid loader attachments on as well.
This would be a purchase by the authority, not by the borough.
Okay.
Strictly by the authority.
So, you're asking tonight whether you can build it into the budget that we will approve later?
Yeah.
Or you can cut it after we put it in, of course.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, this, this is just for conversational purposes. If you'd like to, if you'd like to entertain this as part of your twenty twenty-five budget.
Sure.
Right.
Or, or we could split the cost somehow between us and the borough. Possibly.
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 Another question.
Sure.
Do you loan equipment out between townships and do they come from the township and the borough?
We, we have a, we have an agility agreement, agility program.
You have one?
None of them have the walk-behinds. And actually, only two, one of them, come from the township, so the one has a skid loader. Everybody else does not have a skid loader.
Okay, okay. Well, this is interesting, and I guess you need to talk, talk with the, the state folks to get on the, the state contract to see-
Yeah. The pricing, the pricing will be CoStar's pricing, but I just don't have those accurate numbers yet.
Okay, this is-
I know there's some catches with CoStar pricing, but I happen to deal with that a good bit. Ask them what a price is without CoStar pricing.
I plan to, because I know there's different places you go to, you, you're gonna get a better price than CoStar pricing.
Sometimes a very better price than CoStar pricing.
Yes.
State pricing is not always to your benefit.
Interesting. Okay, any other questions of Robbie? Thanks, Rob. All right, uh, we're now to the point of proposed changes, adjustment to the billing cycle. Deborah?
Yep.
And I know Charles is involved in this too, to some degree, but go ahead.
Currently, uh, our billing goes out on July first. We were looking to move it to a calendar year. As it comes in on July first, we're most busy with events, permits, recycling, construction, building, public outreach. So, all of our stuff is like a, a giant wad of peanut butter. We, I think should spread it out because of staffing. It would be easier for customer service to focus on the billing during the winter months when we're slower, when we're not dealing with events and permitting and people can, you know, with construction activity with, you know, buildings, internal and external. So, um, I just thought that might be something we could consider, uh, to just kind of spread the workload out a little bit throughout the year instead of, you know, bottlenecking everything in our, our busiest months in the summer.
You know, what would be helpful maybe the next meeting, because we don't have to work on this right away, is to show us a timeline of, of where your peaks and valleys are with this, because then we can s, see it quickly. And, um, I, I think this is interesting, and if it would help, I think we should certainly consider it. And, um, to do it, it's gonna take a lot of good communication to people.
Yeah, so, uh, the, the thought would be, so the, the cycle of billing that we're in will go through, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Uh, in theory, uh, you could then bill a half-year for July one-twenty-five through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. And then January one, twenty twenty-six, you bill a full year again, and then suddenly you are on a calendar budget year as opposed to splitting between two years.
Right. Now, I, I'm sure our solicitor will weigh in at some point about the liens and-
I just saw him nodding his head.
Or, or not, I, I don't know how that affects liens and-
And during our payment time, I mean, from July to September, we're pulling in three hundred and forty thousand dollars and a lot of these checks are a hundred-dollar checks. And I can spend my entire day putting these in the system and then, you know, I, I have calls, we have permits, we have, you know, the hard board review and there, there's so much stuff going on right in those, you know, high-traffic months for the borough. I mean, we're a tourist, tourist community, so our, our busiest months are probably April through, you know, October and then the Christmas festival, so. It would just kind of help, I, I believe, to, to provide better customer service for those in construction and doing events and other things. And then, you know, with stormwater, I get a lot of calls, especially if we have a issue between our software company and, you know, the payment system, which we did have this year, and we had a, about a ten days where it was shut down trying to, you know, coordinate the new account numbers and things. So, that would also kind of, uh, help focus those things and, and work with both of those companies to, um, make amends, so.
Again, a visual would be very helpful, but go ahead.
I'm operating strictly from memory here as I say this. When we started, I, I think we've always billed in July.
We, we, we did because of the time of the year we incorporated.
Right.
And we had a one-year cycle. And that became confusing because we were sending out bills late June, early July. And then people were having liens filed against them and they were saying, well, wait, I just paid that. I mean, it was understandably confusing. So, I think, to the extent that we change the cycle such that bills go out early January, we're gonna have to decide, because I know how much work liens are too. We're gonna have to decide when of those bills due and when do they become delinquent.
Right.
Because if we continue with a six-month period, then we're gonna be filing liens th, this time of year, which might not be any better than dealing with paper checks.
Well, I get nineteen hundred of those- Well, I get 1,900 of those in, and we usually only file about 34 liens. So, it does take, I know, a lot of work, but the payments seem to, because I get a lot of calls too.
Sure.
And emails about the bills and liens.
Yeah, again, a visual of all this will help everybody understand.
A visual of the date.
How the workflow is, along with the Harb stuff and along with any other things that, you know, you're involved with, Deb. Because right now, it seems to me there's a huge peak in the middle. But as Adam just said, you know, liens become a mini-peak maybe, and you need to look at that, how that coordinates with everything else you're doing at that time of year.
Construction sort of picks up in the spring, so we have more permits coming in, like, you know, from spring through fall. We're, you know, that's where a lot of that peak comes in too, because she's in a lot of the Harb review for our permits.
Right, right. I think it's a very interesting idea, and we may have to amend some of our lien situations and let things slide if we need to.
Yeah.
But obviously, we have to amend.
I think you need to be flexible in that half-year period.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. Show flexibility, and of course, change our rates, rules, and regulations.
It just makes it easier to understand when you're synced up with everyone else's budget year.
I agree.
Right, I agree.
Very much.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you.
It will also get us away from the county's tax schedule, because right now, just this month, the county taxes are due, and I have people paying their stormwater with their county taxes, and they get confused.
Imagine that. Well, maybe in January, they'll be paying their IRS bills, which is confusing. Who knows? Okay. One more thing, and that's easements in Stevens Run.
Yeah, this is an informational item. Obviously, we're starting to go down the path of figuring out the channel walls on Stevens Run. Right now, the solicitor, the borough solicitor, has this on his docket. It's a heavy lift. The council gave him another deed project as it relates to Lincoln Square, so that is currently in process. We have some of the answers on that, so hopefully Marley Snyder can get moving on this then too. And we know some of the answer. Deborah mentioned that earlier about the pin being in the middle of the Tiber.
For certain properties, right. And other properties, I know from reading the minutes of the Borough Council for years, there are certain properties that the borough has said, we're responsible for the walls forever since we built these walls, or I should say, repaired the walls. So, there's a lot of unique things at foot here.
Yep. But whenever that information comes back, there's going to be some significant decision-making going on at both your level and the council level.
Right.
I can say two quick things about this. First, the decisions that were made so far were kind of a straw vote.
Right.
On the presentation that I made, but there really was never a vote on an actual policy. So, the next step really is to actually identify a policy, like what exactly do we intend to do? So, we want to have a written policy. It's going to be attached by exact properties where these things, there's going to be a list of properties, maybe 30 properties or something like that of where these walls exist. The other thing that I wanted to point out is, we mentioned earlier in the agenda, the Cozen-A'Connor thing. If we want to try to get funds for this, we need to identify ownership. We can't necessarily use government money on private property. So, Cozen did identify, was it Army Corps money, I believe, that's available? It was, I was reading through the eligible projects. It matches almost exactly with what we have. So, they're looking into that a little bit, but we need to push this agenda item on the ownership of the wall before we can start reaching out for money for it, so.
Correct. Pat?
You say policy, whose policy? Our policy or the borough policy?
It would have to be a borough policy, because the borough would, in theory, own the wall.
Right. It would be, I would think, a borough ownership policy.
Right.
Yeah, whenever we, when we kind of did a straw vote here at the Stormwater Authority, it was just, your policy was more of a funding mechanism, but ultimately, the borough would be the owner of these easements.
We are very much the new kids on the block in the context of these walls, and that is beneficial to the authority, but perhaps not for the borough.
And we don't own anything. The borough does.
Yeah, no, clearly, we don't know anything, own anything.
Did you want to entertain a motion for the 400?
Oh, Charles and I were discussing, if you go back in our financing, to invest another $400,000 with pligot because of the interest rate, and we don't need the money right now, as you saw from the description that Chad put up. So, does that?
Makes sense.
Okay. So, I don't, Charles, I'm not sure whether they need a motion, but we have total agreement by the board. Okay?
You want a motion?
Do you want a motion?
Okay. I mean, I can, I mean, it's in the checking, it's all liquid money, but once it goes in the pligot, it's not, it's not necess, it could be liquid if it goes in the pligot, but if you want a really preferred rate, you need to put it in a term account. And I don't know if you should have a motion to do that or not. I'll defer to the solicitor.
It depends on how long you want to have it be deposited for, I think. I mean, or if you're just deferring to administration for whatever.
The last time you just authorized me to restrict it, and I picked the most favorable term and put it in there.
Okay. I would, I would suggest that we authorize you to invest, but for no more than nine months.
Period.
A nine-month period, less than a year.
Yep.
See what we can get.
So.
$400,000?
Yes.
The motion is to authorize borough manager, or Stormwater Authority, Stormwater Authority staff to invest the sum of $400,000 with pligot for a term not to exceed nine months?
Yes.
Okay.
So, maybe I should make that a little more complicated, because you just authorized an additional $100,000. So, we should probably restrict an additional $100,000 for the Gil project. That way, we know that money is locked up for that project, and then that would leave another $300,000 just for whatever project you deem in the future, but it'll be still invested in pligot unless you don't want to do that.
Well, why don't we just leave it as unrestricted?
Okay.
And I don't think restricting it means anything. I mean, because we could always.
You can always dip into it if, when it comes time, sure.
Right.
Yep.
Pat?
Is there a penalty for early withdrawal?
If it's in a term account, yes. So, pligot has different classes of investments. They have a pligot class, which is a nice interest rate, but it's not the premium rate, for lack of a better way of saying it. Then they have pligot prime, which is your medium. So, that's where your, you know, your 4.3s are, your 4.2s, or I'm sorry, 5.2s right now. The term account that you currently have is a 5.41. So, that's where your preferred rates are going to be. And the term, the term will, would have a penalty if you do an early withdrawal. Yeah. The other two, the other two classes are liquid.
Okay. That's what I was trying to determine, is what is the penalty?
If you're in the first two investment types, there is none. Nope. If you have it in a pligot term, there would be a penalty. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head what that rate would be, but there would be a penalty.
So, if you decided $400,000 for six months, and the, and the term was favorable, that would be fine. Again, we're using Chad's cash flow.
Right.
And we should, we should be okay.
Yeah.
And you could go to nine months.
Right. Agreed. So, if you put 400 in a term account, you're, we still have enough liquid in the AC and B account, plus what we know is going to be coming in to meet your obligations for the next six months, nine months.
Right, right. This is a great problem to have.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the motion is?
Motion to authorize Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority staff to invest the sum of $400,000 in a pligot term account for a term not to exceed nine months.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All in favor, I'm going to get out of here.
You're going to make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, not hearing any, it passes. Thank you very much. We're at the public comment period. There is no public here, so no comment. Well, you guys don't count up, unless you want to say something. Okay, just checking. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second. Thank you, Kurt. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this business meeting of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg. We will start with our usual moment of silence and pledge to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, everybody. Just have one opening remark. I'd like to point out to everybody watching that Friday, the 16th, is Community Day for the Harrisburg Senators. They will be playing the Richmond Flying Squirrels at 7:00 PM, and free tickets are available at the Gettysburg Growing Place, here at the Borough Office, the Public Library, Kenny's Market, High Street Brews, the Lincoln Diner, Gettysburg Eddie's, Rita's, Dairy Queen, and Giant. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, our very own Mayor Freeling will be throwing out the first pitch.
6:30.
At 6:30. So, if anybody would like tickets to go to this game, there's where you can get them.
May I just say a word about the name of the minor league teams? My husband, my father pitched on minor league baseball, and I'm amused by their names. In Moultrie, Georgia, there was a team called the Moultrie Crackers. Am I not on mic?
Bring your mic down.
There was a team called the Moultrie Crackers.
Gray button.
I was saying I'm amused by the name of the minor league teams, and some of these mentioned tonight are no exception. People sit up nights thinking of the names for those teams I've been in, and I just wanted to comment that I find them interesting. That's it.
All right. An executive set.
If I add something, I have, it's kind of off, Dr. Gilbert McCorville asked a question. And he was a major surgeon here in Gettysburg, and he played triple A baseball as a pitcher. So, I just wanted to bring that up, just to honor him.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the July 22nd, 2024 monthly work session of the Borough Council, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's general business meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to provide information and to discuss matters of employment and the terms and conditions of employment of current and prospective borough administrative employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of borough business which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. First item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda in the minutes. Would anybody care to make a motion to approve the August 12th, 2024 agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting held on July 8th, 2024, and to approve the minutes of the CDBG hearing, public hearing number one, and the council work session each held on July 22nd, 2024 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Charles, do we have a CDBG hearing on the 26th as well?
We do. That'll be at 6:30.
All right. So, probably I would like to include that in the announcements, that there will be a public hearing to discuss the CDBG funds for fiscal year 2025. That meeting is August 26th at 6:30 PM in council chambers. All right. So, that takes us to our special presentation for the evening. Chad Claybaugh with a presentation on the inner loop construction plan.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me okay? So, last month, you can recall that I presented the bids that we received for the Gettysburg interloop, North Washington Street project. This phase of the project is for utility work for the storm drains and the Gettysburg municipal authorities' water line. The bids came in significantly higher than we anticipated, more than $200,000 more than we anticipated. So, we looked at a couple of ways of trying to curb some of that. We unfortunately don't really have the opportunity to not proceed with the project. The council did authorize to award the contract to York Excavating, the parent low bidder, contingent on some negotiations. So, over the course of the last month, we've had several meetings. Charles was in some of them, Robbie was in some of them. A lot of players from the Gettysburg College were in those meetings, property owners, The Floor Shop, and Antica Pizza. And we are trying to do the best we can to come up with some ways to save some money potentially and improve the traffic control at the same time. One of the things that we opted is, or we identified early, is one of the big ticket items in the bid was the traffic control. $157,000 of the close to a million dollar project was traffic control. And the reason why is because it required the contractor to leave one lane open at all times. So, there's a significant amount of flagger time whenever that happens. So, one of the options was to come up with a plan to come up with some phasing while we, where we would allow the contractor to close one block of the street at a time. The contractor just today provided the savings to us to be able to do that, just over 30, around $31,000. He was going to knock off the price to allow him to close a block at a time. There are some other advantages to doing that as well. There are some efficiencies. The project goes a little bit faster whenever we allow them to shut down an area. And there's also a safety component, obviously. If you don't have traffic going through a construction zone, there's a safety component there. So, we are pursuing that a little bit further. We just got that number today, so Charles and I haven't had a chance to really vet it. There's a couple of things that I'd like to push back on, but we're happy with the path that we're heading down. The presentation tonight is to show you some of the traffic control that we've developed, and at least make you aware of it, and then hear some feedback on the path that we're heading down. So, the first, there's five total slides that we're going to show you here, PDFs of what sections of the road, of the road would be closed down during construction. So, this one, and let me try to get this one. This is Phase 1A, and there's a tiny little block right here at this intersection. So, the, so the project is in all of Washington Street, right, from Chambersburg Street all the way up to the stream. This is Stevens Run here. This Phase 1A, you can see a Phase 1A at the top, would just be the shutdown of that intersection. During that shutdown, there would be flaggers. The street would have to be open. So, I want to go ahead into the next one, Charles. This, this section here is the second block. Now, the Antica Pizza and The Floris would have to come in from the north during this phase, and it shows all the little bypass. phase, and it shows all the little bypass. There's signage around in the borough that would have to happen for all of these things, and I'm not going to dwell on the details. We did vet all of these things. We provided contractor comments. He's made amendments according to our wishes, but I'm just going to kind of show you the high level. You will notice a blue block right here on the old Agway Center. That is the staging area the contractor has secured with the Gettysburg College. So go ahead, Charles, to the next one. This is the boring under the railroad track. Now, there's, this is the one point in time during construction that the street will have to be shut down. We think it's for up to two weeks. We're hoping less than that, but that's because of the continuous overnight boring that's required by CSX. So the street will be shut down. Again, the key property here, I'm going to keep talking about, is the Florist and Antica Pizza. They would have to access through the south during that. They'll always be open during construction. When we did talk to the Florist Shop, she was happy to hear that, that at least they'll be always open. There'll never be a time whenever that her access drive is shut down, but I think it was more of a concern for the owners of Antica Pizza, because he does rely on vehicle traffic, and it is going to be an impact to his business. So if you want to go on to the next one, Charles? So this is the next phase up. This is the intersection at Constitution, and there would have to be some flagging whenever they go through that intersection. So it's limited, you don't see as much signage around, because they would have to allow vehicles through that intersection. And then the last one is up by the creek, and that street would also get shut down during that phase. And during this phase, you can see all of the signage and the bypass traffic. So that's really the skinny of it. We are looking to try to progress ASAP within the next week or two with getting signed contracts, because if we want to hit this window of construction that we need to hit, they need to get their materials ordered. So we are at a point, a critical stage in the schedule where we need to make a decision on this, but just wanted to pause for a moment and see if you feel like we're headed in the right direction, if you have any opinions on the traffic control, if you're happy with the direction that Charles and I are heading down, we'll continue to push ahead.
What is the total projected timetable?
90 days, three months is the total timeframe. And we're looking at starting just after Labor Day. So essentially, first full week of September, they'll be under construction, and we are looking to get finished just before the Christmas festival, which is December 6.
Six, seven, eight.
Six, yeah.
Is there a, you said the flaggers are really expensive, right?
$60,000 worth of flagging.
What about, is there any other option for that as far as like a light system or anything like that, that's less expensive?
I mean, there may be some things you could look at, but it's not likely. This one's a really, because there's so many little alleys and driveway accesses, that it's really difficult to just do that with a light system, because there's mid-block entrances everywhere. So they would have to basically, they would still have to post somebody at all of those little entrances and stuff.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So if somebody was pulling out of a business, and there was only a light on both ends, they wouldn't know if they were able to go out left or right at what time. So you had to post somebody at every single entrance, and I would say it just would probably end up costing more than just flaggers.
Okay.
Good question.
Mr. Claybaugh, this is Patty. Just a clarification, during that two-week period when the railroad work will be done, is that closed 24 hours a day, or is it just during the evening that they're going to be doing that work?
24 hours a day.
Okay. Okay, do. Thank you.
Yep, and there'll be work during that 24 hours a day, too. That's the other thing that I want to make sure it's clear. There's going to be a diesel engine running at 24 hours a day. So the college is aware of that, and they're making their students aware as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, this is a hugely important project, and it's going to be a major inconvenience for all of the residences and businesses there. We really appreciate the public's understanding that this work is crucial and must get done, and I'm sure our team will work to make the disruptions as minimal as possible. All right, thank you, sir. That takes us to public comment. This first section in the evening is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. Please use the podium. We need your name and address of residence. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you'd like to speak on a topic that's not on tonight's agenda, we ask that you wait till the end of the meeting for the second public comment section. Last chance, public comment. All right, seeing none, we will move on. That takes us to the planning department and Mr. Whitmore. He is not with us tonight.
That is correct. Director Whitmore is at the American Planning Association Conference this week, so I am going to attempt to pinch-hit for him. His report includes a note that there were 22 code violations issued in the last month, six building permits, eight certificates of appropriateness, four special events permits, one fence permit, two highway occupancy permits, six land use permits, 61 rental inspections were completed, nine rental unit licenses were issued, six sign permits were issued, two stormwater management permits were issued, and one yard sale in the last week, or last month, rather. Update on the planning commission. Planning commission met July 15th. They discussed two continued subdivision and land development applications, and they also discussed definition section of the initial draft of the proposed zoning ordinance update. Regarding a library subdivision and the associated, that's associated with seminary hill property, that was approved with minor title sheet changes. The Spectre Coat subdivision and land development plan was conditionally approved with conditions established by the Borough Engineer. Planning commission formally began public comment on items related to the consultant and staff draft zoning document and map at the June Planning Commission meeting. During the month of July, two additional outreach events were conducted. A farmers market booth was staffed on July 20th with direct conversations with the zoning officer, and a July 29th open house right here in council chambers, where the public was invited to provide direct comment on the current draft. The planning commission's August 19th meeting will include a discussion on the individual zoning districts, which in August 29th meeting will be held to include a question and answer segment for the community to have a discussion on that. Zoning hearing board is not intending to meet in the next month. The sign ordinance, final draft document, has been established with publication requested at the August 12th meeting tonight, pending council action on that. Regarding code enforcement ticketing, council's last action regarding code enforcement ticketing occurred at the February 26th work session meeting. Staff has reviewed practices in other jurisdictions that do this, and has established a draft working document currently under review with the Borough Solicitor. Two motions on your agenda tonight. The first pertaining to the sign ordinance, a copy was of the completed document is located within the electronic file for planning items. Changes to electric signs, and the final sizing information has been incorporated into the document for your reference. The second is related to putt-putt, Gettysburg, Gettys Golf, rather. The land developers agreement for Gettys Golf project is included in council meeting materials. Traditionally, a stormwater management agreement would also be required, but the site's improvements do not warrant such an agreement due to the prior impervious surface matter and limited impacts to the pervious surface. Thus, no financial security is required. And if you have questions, I will do my best to entertain those.
Anyone? All right. Would anybody care to make the motion on the sign ordinance revision?
I'll make a motion to authorize the finalization and the publication for the subsequent intended enactment by the Borough Council of the Gettysburg Borough Sign Ordinance of 2024, and the related amendment, modification, and replacement of the Borough Sign Ordinance Regulations, as codified in Chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Would anybody care to make the land development motion?
A motion to authorize the execution and delivery of a land development agreement with Gettys Golf LLC for the development of certain real property located within the borough and situated at, situated at 533 Steinware Avenue. Jay Matthew Moon, President of Borough Council, and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, attest, and execute and deliver the land development agreement on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Do we have a representative of this project here? All right. I just want to say I've sat through several meetings where your organization was involved, and I want to thank you for your patience with that process, and I think we're all looking forward to a successful project here. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, sir. All right, that takes us to Ms. English.
Thank you, President Moon. I have my manager's report in your folder. We attended the Prop Conference with Ms. Butterfield. She's probably going to elaborate. We got a lot of great contacts, and it was a great conference. Karen was there as well. Next Thursday, we are going to be at the college for their freshmen's coming in for their sustainability, kind of like a little outdoor event for them. We're going to have a rain barrel there and talk about sustainability and things of that nature. We are also, I'm going to be walking around with Mr. Griffian with a peeling paint letter or just exterior issues in the Harb district for folks to kind of remind them to, you know, upkeep the exterior of their properties, and now's a good time to start doing that before it gets more expensive or more costly to repair. We did a walk for trash and recycling. We hit Culp's Park, northeast area around the college, and the west residential area off Middle Street. And of all of those areas, we found 64 individuals that may not have been recycling, so we did leave them a hang tag. I do have the map and the actual properties that we did provide a hang tag at that location. I believe that is it. I do have four items on the agenda for a motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. English? All right, would anybody care to make the Harb motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, Harb, following its review on July 17th, 2024, and to approve the grant of certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA 240042, major project, 338 South Washington Street, Edward Huggins for the roof replacement project to include the replacement of the historic metal roof on the structure and the front porch with 26-gauge Henderson galvanized aluminum standing seam, as submitted in the application dated May 20th, 2024. COA 240047, major project, 233 Beaufort Avenue, Sean Sterner for the front porch deck stair replacement project to include a deck design painted white or gray with vertical mullions, required railings, and the boxing of the steps that is code compliant when the new scope is submitted for approval. COA-240034, major project, 65 Steinware Avenue, John Mueller for the roof project to include the removal of an existing rear skylight and to cover with charcoal shingles, and to deny any replacement of the historic standing seam metal roof with alternate roof materials. COA-240046, major project, 161 North Stratton Street, Melissa Stahl for the window gutter downspout replacement project to include the replacement of 10 windows on the side and rear facades with alternate window materials, excluding the three front facade windows, and to replace existing gutters and two downspouts with alternate materials, as stated in the application submitted on June 20th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It takes us to the parking department. I believe Ms. Fissell is out on personal reasons today, so I believe Mr. Gable will be filling in.
Yes, I will do that to the best of my ability. There were, we are in residential parking permit season, so if you have an RPP permit, this is your time to renew for the next year. Currently, there were 54 of 270 permits renewed, just an FYI to get those done. Year-to-date, 1,190 parking tickets have been issued, which is actually down from last year, so thank you for complying with Borough ordinances on that. That is actually what we'd like to see, everyone paying the proper way. A note about LPP, which is interesting with, and I dare, I go there, but with the issue with the paid parking at the Gettysburg area school district parking lots, we have noticed an uptick in local privileged parking permits. In the last month, we issued 30 additional above this time last year, so folks are realizing the benefit of that discounted parking rate and taking advantage of the program, which is exactly why it was designed that way, so that's encouraging to see as well. And a note about your budgetary decisions for 2024. If you remember, council and the fee resolution increased the overnight rate in the Racehorse Alley parking garage from 12 to $18. An example of that increased revenue, every year, there's an annual teachers' conference that comes to Gettysburg and functions in Gettysburg Hotel. Last year, that generated $4,776 from that conference. This year, that number is $7,056. So you can see the financial benefits to that policy decision for the Borough Council. Two motions on your agenda tonight. One is referencing the request for an additional ADA space. This comes from a constituent of yours in the municipality. This individual knows that this is not their personal space, but rather will be situated close to the residence for the general public use. And the second is an amendment to juror parking that the borough has with Adams County for jury duty. The old system required jurors to interact with our kiosk system in the Racehorse Alley Garage. That system goes away. They will get a traditional printed placard to put on their dashboard for their service as a juror.
There's actually a third motion as well, to remove the meters on North Washington Street, which is
Yes, thank you.
the first step in our inner loop project, so we will take that motion first, if anybody would care to make it.
I'll make a motion to authorize the finalization of the publication, and the publication for the subsequent intended enactment by the Borough Council of a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 15, Part 4 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg for the purposes of removing an area of payment parking spaces on the west side of North Washington Street between Racehorse Alley and Railroad Street, and to amend the payment parking zone on the west side of North Washington Street accordingly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Would anybody care to make the jury duty motion?
Sure. A motion to authorize the execution and delivery of Amendment Number 1 to the Memorandum of Understanding for Parking Services for Citizens Called to Jury Duty, originally dated on November 14th, 2022, with the County of Adams for amendment of the MOU to authorize the replacement of the use of parking tokens with the use of standard parking pass documents, templates, to be issued by the borough to be used for the parking of motor vehicles within the Racehorse Alley parking garage by citizens of Adams County called for jury duty in the Court of Common Peace. Jay Matthew Moon, President of Borough Council, and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, attest, execute, and deliver the amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding for Parking Services on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg. of Understanding for Parking Services on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Charles, do I understand this correctly, that this is free parking for people who have jury duty?
Yeah, the jurors themselves do not pay, but the County of Adams does compensate the borough.
Excellent. It is a sacred duty we have when we are called for jury duty, and it's such an amazing thing that we get to make sure our government is doing its job before it puts somebody in prison, so I'm glad we're able to provide this service for everybody who answers that All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Would anyone care to make a motion about the ADA space?
I'll make a motion to authorize, go ahead.
To authorize the designation and establishment of a parking space for the exclusive use by persons with disabilities in an area on the east side of South Howard Avenue or at or near its intersection with Wolf Alley, and to authorize the placement and erection of appropriate signage that the designated parking spaces reserve for use by persons with disabilities, and that any unauthorized use by a person parking in such space shall be subject to a fine and may subject the unlawfully parked motor vehicle to towing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
Is South Howard, what is, what is the time limit on this meter? This, or is there no, is it two-hour, three-hour?
I don't recall off the top of my, is that an RPP area? I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I don't think the block is metered. I think they're just asking for a designated space.
Okay, so this isn't a meter. We're putting in just a...
This is just somebody who is hoping to have access to proximal parking near her house.
Right. When I, when I read the letter, it seemed like she's looking for a, because she says she doesn't have off-street parking.
Right.
So if it was a meter, then she'd have to move it after a couple hours.
I think her issue was just that other vehicles park, and she's not able to as easily access her house.
So this is just a, there's no meter?
There's no meter. It would just be a designated ADA space, and as Mr. Gable said, she's understanding that this is not her designated space, that it's open to anybody who has a disability or uses a mobility device.
Makes sense.
Any other questions?
And it'll be clearly marked with signage and paint on the concrete or just the sign?
We don't do paint.
We don't do paint. Thank you.
Do we have to do it, like shave the sidewalk down at all or anything?
Robbie, would you be able to address that?
No, won't be a depressed curb.
Okay.
Because, because if it's, if it's by the alley, the alley will be accessible.
It should be right next to the alley. Has an existing curb cut?
Yeah.
Okay. Those are good questions. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to Robbie with Public Works.
Good evening. You all should have received my report. A couple highlights on my report. Last, beginning of last week, we tried to do our line painting of crosswalk lines and yellow lines, but we got rained out from Tuesday on, so we're going to pick it up this week, starting tomorrow night into Friday. So we'll be back out at night painting lines and crosswalks and parking stall lines and so forth. I did get the authorization to plan to add a couple parking spaces out here in front of the building. Working on with John to get the permit for that and start the construction of that, hopefully the 19th of August. There is a motion in my department, on my tab, for the winter maintenance agreement with PennDOT. That is the winter maintenance agreement for PennDOT with Steinware Avenue.
All right, anybody have any questions for Mr. Harbaugh? Would anybody care to make the winter maintenance motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 081224-1 for the purpose of authorizing the execution and delivery of a winter maintenance services agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the transfer of winter maintenance responsibilities to the borough for designated state highways within the borough of Gettysburg. Jay Matthew Moon, President of Borough Council, Charles R. Gable, MPA Borough Manager, and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, attest, execute, and deliver the winter maintenance services agreement on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Harbaugh. That takes us to Mr. Claybaugh, the Borough Engineer.
Good evening, Council. You have a copy of my written report. Three quick updates, all stormwater-related. The first is, and this isn't on my report, but earlier tonight I gave a presentation on the Lincoln Avenue Storm Drain Project. They did authorize me to move forward with the design of that project, why that's important to you. If we push ahead with this project next year, which is largely dependent on Columbia Gas's schedule, if they want to move forward with this, then we're going to be moving forward with the pipe replacement. The borough's contribution to that is the paving, so I'll be putting that on your budget for next year, whenever it comes to budget season here in a couple of months. The other two things I failed to mention whenever we were talking about the Gettysburg Inner Loop Phase B project, that the Stormwater Authority did vote to increase their contribution from 300, or $230,000 to $330,000 because of the overage that was not anticipated. So the same request is being asked to Gettysburg Municipal Authority. That'll be on their agenda on Monday of next week. And then finally, the whole first page pretty much of my report is about the channel wall assessment. Of course, that's an 800-pound gorilla here. We're talking about the channel walls on Stevens Run. There are some walls that are in imminent danger of failing. The most notable is the Bream Alley Wall. That project luckily is out for bid. It is associated with Gettysburg Municipal Authority's interceptor replacement project. I did do an inspection after the storms on Friday last week. It is not in great shape, but it didn't fall in, so.
And there does seem to be more rocks in it than usual.
It's more rocks falling in every time it storms, so we're hoping that it holds out for a couple more months until we get under construction. The contractors have been asking questions, and we've been responding to those through Bukart Horn, who is bidding the project for Gettysburg Municipal Authority, so stay tuned for more on that one. I made a bullet here about the progressing, the ownership discussion of the walls. Of course, there was a straw vote that there was a policy that the borough starts replacing these walls. The next step, if we want to try to get funding, we did meet with Cozen O'Connor, our financial strategies, to see if we can start getting funding for this. The first step is to have clear easements on these walls. We can't get government money for private walls. So we met with Solicitor Eastman. We're starting down a path of getting what we need to be able to secure public funding. Cozen has identified some potential funding sources, so that is great. We're talking about $6 million worth of walls that need to be replaced. And then the last thing is I did put some pictures on the, my report of the wall that is failing. It's what we refer to as late-night bites, right next to Carlisle Street, City Mart, and the old ugly mug. That wall is in pretty bad shape, and it has a lot of pressure behind it because they've put mortar in the joints over the years, and you can see the moisture in the pictures that I show you is trying to get out of the wall, but it's showing signs of rotation, so that's another one that we're going to keep our eye on, so. Sorry for all the bad gloom and doom, but it just happened to be right after a week's worth of large storm events, so it was kind of appropriate that I give you a bit of an update on that, so.
Well, with the increased frequency and intensity of these storm events over the last several years, and projections that they will get worse, this is a problem we're going to have to address. This is an issue that I think previous councils have kicked down the road, you know, it'll be somebody else's problem, and I'm sorry to say, my friends, I think it's going to be our problem. All right, any questions for Mr. Claybaugh? All right, thank you, sir. All right, Chief Glenny could not be with us tonight for personal reasons. Mayor Freeling, did you have anything to say about the Police Department?
No, I don't.
All right.
Do you have any questions?
And does anybody have any questions for the mayor?
I can address the motion if you'd like.
Please do.
So the Police Department has mutual aid agreements with Cumberland Township and the National Park Service. In recent years, the mutual aid agreement with Cumberland was renewed and updated. However, the existing mutual aid agreement with the National Park Service dates back to the 1980s, so this is long overdue, and this motion just formalizes that update and affirms our responsibility to each other should either entity be called upon to assist in an event.
All right, would anybody care to make that motion?
I'll make a motion authorizing preparation of a resolution for subsequent consideration of adoption by the Borough Council in order to authorize the intergovernmental cooperation by the borough and to enter in a mutual aid and assistance cooperation agreement with the National Park Service, United States Department of the Interior, for the purposes of providing mutual law enforcement services and emergency assistance by the officers of the Gettysburg Borough Police Department within the Gettysburg National Military Park and the Eisenhower National Historic Site by the National Park Service Law Enforcement Rangers and Park Service Police Officers within the Borough of Gettysburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
I have a discussion. Didn't that little agreement with the Park Service come up today in Gettysburg with somebody running through the town, and the Park Service had to come in and the Sheriff's Department to assist our Police Department?
I don't know. I don't think we would speak about an ongoing investigation if that's the case, but there have been many, many...
It's not an ongoing investigation, but it is just showing how that MOU is very important.
Oh, absolutely. There have been multiple occasions. The week surrounding July 4th, 2020, comes to mind, where we leaned heavily on dozens of outside law enforcement agencies to help us keep everything calm, and the Park Service was absolutely part of that equation. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to the Officer, the Manager, and the Treasurer, Ms. Stahl.
My monthly report was in your packet. Anything I'll say is Thursday will be my 35th year working for the borough.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we are the more fortunate for it. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gable?
Just some financial updates real quick. Currently, over, just over 100% of real estate taxes have been collected, so that's good to report, and resulting of that is currently there is $3.4 million of liquid money in the, I should not, I should say not all that's liquid. Some of it's tied up as an emergency reserve, but essentially 2.4 of that is liquid money, so we're in a good budgetary position there. Currently, I also, it's a little, little known or noted, but Fund 35, our Liquid Fuels Fund, has $785,000 in that. The reason that money keeps going up is we have not used it yet because we've been using other funds specific to some of the ARPA-associated policies the council's adopted over since 2021, essentially. I note that because we, on our current trajectory, we won't be using liquid fuels in the next year or two, so this fund more likely than not will go over $1 million, which is, puts us in a very nice position when it comes time to start paving some more roads. That's what liquid fuels money is used for. Aside from our bills and payroll, a standing motion under my tab, there are two others. The third is essentially creating a policy that permits the borough to accept all forms of online or electronic payments. Currently, we only do that essentially for parking permits and tickets and other fees associated with parking. Everything else is generally paper-driven, so this will allow us to update and modify our online software to accept payments for things like license issuing, permits issuing, special amount permits, those types of things. The second motion is related to the minimum municipal obligation, and this is related to the 2025 budget, which we will soon begin to talk about. If you remember, council authorized the higher of two numbers to pay into the pension funds for both the police pension and the non-uniform pension. If you will note in your packet tonight, as it relates to the non-uniform plan, the absolute minimum that the borough would have to put into the fund is $109,732. If you want to put a higher amount based on the market value of assets that the actuaries suggest, $159,596. Conversely, for the Police Department, those numbers are $214,664, the higher number being $287,240. The motion is crafted as an either-or, in the red, you will see, and the reason is I would like your direction on which number to build into the 2025 budget. Sarah and I spoke with the pension funds actuary this morning, and he assures us that should you pick the lower number, it would not adversely affect the standing of either pension fund, meaning the borough has always been in a very good position, fairly atypical for municipalities where our funds are nearly 100% funded, and your decision last year to put in the higher amount reinforces that great financial standing in our pension funds. So if you pick the lower numbers, it will help ease some of the burdens in the development of the 2025 budget. If you pick the higher number, your mandatory minimums in future years would probably be a little less. So that is a discussion point for council to decide when you're making this motion.
Can we deliberate that before the motion is made?
Yes.
All right, okay. All right, discussion. Does anybody have a strong opinion here as to which way they would like to see the council All right, so just a little bit more background here. We are not unique necessarily, but we are amongst a very small number of municipalities in the Commonwealth who do have fully funded pension plans for both uniform and non-uniform employees. It puts us in a very good place, and it guarantees that we're going to be able to meet the pension obligations we have to our employees, essentially in perpetuity, as long as we keep it fully funded. Many municipalities are in a less advantageous position, and they are sort of banking against the idea that nothing will ever go wrong, and as long as they just kind of keep paying into it minimally, they'll always have a kind of enough. It's sort of like the social security program, right? As long as everybody keeps paying in a minimum, it should go on forever, but if for some reason some people were excused from that, then the entire system would start to suffer. So what I'm hearing from the manager, and please correct me if I'm mistaken, is that because our accounts are in such good standing, we could opt to take the minimum. It would not negatively infect our valuation or our assets in the pension, but it would save, if I'm doing the math right here, which is wholly unlikely, about $123,000?
Uh...
Am I doing that wrong?
It'd be 70 plus 50. Yeah, yeah.
Now, I want everybody to remember that over the next two years, we are already looking at systemic tax increases to cover the cost of the two uniformed officers we added in last year's budget. Thus far, we've not actually paid for those officers with our money. We have reallocated ARPA funds in... money. We have, uh, reallocated ARPA funds in, um, allowable and creative ways to, um, sustain government function. Over the next few years, we need to figure out where we're going to recover about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually to pay for these two officers. Um, so prudently, we, we could look at a millage increase this year and a millage increase the following year. This year's increase would be substantial enough. Is it point four? Is that what you told me this morning?
Uh, it'd be just over point two. So it'd be a point four for the two. So, so a tenth, a, a, a tenth of a mil makes the borough about fifty thousand dollars in, in taxes, give or take.
So a little over point two mils per officer. Each officer, um, representing approximately, and this is sort of an average, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year-ish. So if we went with the minimum, um, payments here for this year and for next year, um, it would help us cover the costs of those new officers. Um, but that doesn't necessarily mean we would not also be looking at a millage increase otherwise. Uh, but what it does mean is that we would be using funds, um, in different ways to help cover the expenses we've already, um, agreed to. We could then, in two years' time, if we decided to return to the practice of making the full payments or continue with the minimums as many municipalities do. Or we can opt here to continue making the full payments, um, to keep our, our funds fully vested. Is it allowable to pay the maximum on one and the minimum on the other?
You could do that, or you actually could pick a number in between.
All right. So, does anybody have any strong feelings about which way you think we should go? I don't have any strong.
Hi.
Go ahead, Pat.
Did the ARPA funds go into funding any other salaries?
Absolu- oh, say, ask the que- I thought you were, I thought you were ready to ask pension. What was the question again?
Did the ARPA money go into funding any other salaries in the borough?
So yes, the, the council has authorized for several years now where, uh, the provision of government services, that's a specific quote out of the twenty twenty-one legislation, um, the provision for government services is an allowable use of ARPA funds. Um, provision of government services is paying salaries of employees to provide those government services. So the borough has been using ARPA funds to reimburse payrolls, uh, for municipal staff during that time.
That's an excellent question.
My next question is, at, um, the Adams County Borough Association, most boroughs do not use ARPA funds for staffing. They use it to, uh, like parks, recreations, things. So why do we do this? And I think, if I remember correctly, when we went to Washington to meet with Senator Casey, that was not a thing that ARPA was supposed to be used for, for staffing.
It's the provision of government services. Who's providing the services? Is your staff.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we have opted to shift, uh, other monies into our capital reserves and use the ARPA funds for the provision of governmental services. This is allowing us to build a reserve that is going to allow us to make the investments in those infrastructure projects. For example, when we apply for a grant that has a required match, um, we do that out of our capital reserves. Uh, without, if we don't have that, um, we would have to borrow. And again, this is a place where we are in a unique position as a borough, and I must say, it's because of the capable and pragmatic financial leadership of Manager Gable. We are in a unique position in that we have, um, an ever-shrinking debt, which we are on target to have paid off by twenty twenty-nine. Uh, so we have used this as council has seen fit over the last three years in order to, uh, make sure that we are in a better position to complete all of these infrastructure projects, like the inner loop, like these stormwater issues that keep coming up and are going to keep coming up, and, um, most notably, the, um, future Baltimore revitalization project. Those are excellent questions. Does that help?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And also, while we're talking about it, the man that was picked up today, the, the incubation is completed, and he's in jail pending arraignment. So I don't think there's anything to question there, which you did question earlier.
Okay. We're gonna stay on this topic, though, right now. Thank you, though. Um, is there anyone on council who has a, um, position they would like to voice on how we should structure this motion?
Yeah, I have a question. Excuse me. Um, so if we went somewhere in the middle to fund the pension plan, um, and, and we kind of had a goal of somewhere in the middle between two hundred and fourteen thousand and two hundred and eighty-seven thousand for the, um, for the uniform, et cetera, would that still allow us to have, see a cost savings that would allow us to be able to hire full-time officers?
Well, so the issue is not the hiring of the officers. That's already been authorized.
Right, I understand that.
We are currently struggling to hire new officers, but, um, the question for us is if we want to, and this isn't actually, the, doesn't have to be related to this question at all. Uh, I was just suggesting that that hundred and twenty thousand, hundred and twenty-three thousand would be, uh, an interesting way for us to pay for at least one of those officers, hopefully without too steep of a millage increase, uh, on this next budget.
Right.
But yeah, we could go in the middle if you want. Um, if we split it down the middle, we could, you know, do sixty, sixty, sixty thousand, whatever, and then we would be looking at, uh, closer to a point one millage increase this year. Um, yeah.
I would be in favor of the lower amount if it means that we can save money for the taxpayers on the millage increase.
I would tend to agree. Anyone else?
I would agree with that. Um, since I've been on council, we've only raised taxes once the past six years. Um, and this would soften the blow, uh, with the taxpayer. And if it doesn't affect the valuation, I say we do that.
I'm gonna be in the minority on this, which I usually am. It's okay. Um, I really think that, uh, we need to slowly start raising the millage. Uh, I, I think that we also should go with the lower on this to save money on the budget, knowing that some of that are, uh, that are P, ARPA funds are going to be run out very soon, and that we're gonna have this expense of the new officers that we just hired, which we all did, and we all need them, and we all get it.
Right.
But we also have a public works department with four.
That's correct.
I would like to see that raised to five. And I, we're gonna have to figure out how to do that in the budget. So I would tend to go with the lower and start raising slowly on the millage, so we can do that. That's my suggestion. But I am aware that I'm probably in the minority in that, and that's okay.
No, you're, I mean, that, that's a wise approach, too, right? I mean, we're talking about a savings for one year, not for, um, not forever. Like, you know, making this decision this year doesn't fund this officer in perpetuity. So, uh, it would just be a savings for the next fiscal year. Uh, I think that's a totally valid position.
Something to think about.
Mm-hmm. No, and I, I-
And Charles, and Charles, you're comfortable with that approach, correct? That's what I heard you say.
Yeah, yeah, I'm comfortable because our pension fund actuary is comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I'm hearing, uh, I think, a consensus on the lower numbers, but with an understanding that this is not necessarily going to obviate a millage increase, depending on where the budget falls in the next several months. All right. So if somebody would like to make the motion with the two lower numbers, please?
Sure, I'll do. A motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five minimum municipal obligation, MMO, based upon market value of assets for the Gettysburg Police Pension Plan in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars, and the non-uniformed pension plan in the amount of one hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Uh, and thank you all for a thoughtful discussion there. Would anybody care to make the motion for the electronic payments?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number zero eight one two two four dash two for the purpose of authorizing, ratifying, confirming, and implementing the acceptance of electronic or online payments and the receipt of certain borough fees and costs as authorized by either ordinance or resolution enacted or adopted by the Borough Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. And takes us to our liaison reports.
Uh, we still need to pay bills and payrolls.
Do we?
I have bills to pay.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's one of them. Would anybody care to make the motion on the bills and payrolls?
I'll make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Let's go ahead and pay those bills. Um, I don't believe Ms. Sellers is with us this evening from Main Street. Did she give you any updates?
She did not.
All right. Um, Mr. Carr, Gera.
I don't have anything, sorry. I don't have anything to report right now. I'm reaching out to the Gera Board. Uh, if nobody was aware, uh, we, um, Erin, uh, the Director, uh, Gera, um, has left us. Um, but it's a good thing, I think. She's, she's happy. Um, and we'll hopefully, uh, have an, have more to, I'll hopefully have more to report at the next meeting.
Thank you. The Municipal Authority, Mr. Berger.
Uh, yes, the Andrews. Well, we're still, um, proceeding with the overall design, um, working through the land development process with Cumberland Township, uh, for the Interceptor Sewer Project. Uh, we're waiting for the contractor's bid numbers. They're gonna be coming in, uh, for our meeting on Monday, August nineteenth. Uh, and at that meeting, we also talk about the increased contribution to the Inner Loop Project, um, next Monday, the additional one hundred thousand. So we'll vote on that then.
Excellent. Uh, Mrs. Butterfield, the bid.
Yes, the, um, bid, when it came into being here in Gettysburg, resulted in a remarkable, uh, reservation of properties within the Elm Street Borders. Um, these, this was an extraordinary change for Gettysburg and one that was very welcome. Yesterday, a member of the original bid task force gave to me a notebook, a history of all of their, um, task forces, their committees, the people who populated those committees, uh, their goals, and some of their successes are listed in here. Very interesting, um, publication. And after I go through it carefully, it will be at the Main Street desk here, if any of you wanted to, um, look at it. But two interesting things that I shared with Gary Schaefer earlier, uh, from that publication, um, a photo of one of the early houses in, um, Gettysburg on Washington Street, uh, one of the very earliest African-American citizens, Mr. Royer, and, uh, his wife pictured in front of their house with the one window. And this was a very typical architectural style at, uh, that time, but an interesting article on, on his residence there. And the other interesting publication that I found in there was the first newsletter that we had published. And Charles, I'm going to turn this over to you to, uh, take a close look at it. It was our very first publication, our very first newsletter. It talks about Harb receiving a grant, and it talks about Main Street and all of their Christmas activities. So a lot of very interesting stuff in this early newsletter, and I'd say it will be at, um, Charles's desk.
Interesting historical facts and always helpful to have such documents. From winter of nineteen eighty-six. Very cool. I look forward to reading that. All right. Uh, Mayor Freeling, anything else about the ACBA meeting?
And I said they don't meet until September again.
All right. Mrs. Butterfield, uh, COG.
Yes. And one thing I'd like to say, and Judy, you were talking about Gettysburg history.
Yes.
Uh, my aunt and the manky building right beside where I live, which was one of the first buildings in Gettysburg. It was a pottery shop.
Yes, I've heard about that, and I think there's a sample of one of the pottery pieces in someone's possession within, uh, the borough.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Mrs. Butterfield, the COG.
Yes, I, I missed the last COG meeting because I was at the Professional Recyclers Conference in Bethlehem that was mentioned earlier. Um, but something interesting happened, uh, relating to Gettysburg at that conference. In the introductory remarks, we were to talk about the challenges our municipality is facing when it comes to recycling. And I mentioned our microwave issues, and, uh, two different haulers who happened to be present at that, um, conference reached out to me later with some conversation they wanted to have about, uh, their dealing with our microwave. The first one, we would have to transport our ovens to them in northern Pennsylvania, and that was not practical for us, um, because of the vehicle situation and the staff people to take the time to haul them. But the second one, uh, that company was willing to come to us. So, uh, we would set up an event, just like our covered device event, except it would be for turning in microwave, and then that company would come down and haul them away and recycle them, and we'd never see them again. So positive things do happen at these, uh, conferences, and I was very pleased about that. Do you have a question, Ms. Mayor?
Okay.
I didn't hear you. What?
I asked if you had a question about the recycling conference.
No, I don't.
Okay.
All right. Um, Mrs., uh, Ms. Lawson, happy?
They need tomorrow evening.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Butterfield, ACTPO.
ACTPO meets on October twenty-third, and I will attend.
All right. Hey, Chris?
Got nothing for you.
Okay. Nothing on the trail of feasibility for me, all right. Um, anything to add on recycling?
No, just the success of that conference, whether, if it's going to help with our re, uh, microwave situation, it's perfect.
All right. And everybody knows where to find the fire and EMS reports when they're provided?
If I may add, just a brief comment about county EMS. Uh, Governor Shapiro did, uh, issue, um, a disaster declaration. Adams County is included in that because of the torrential rains we had with, um, tropical, former tropical cyclone Debbie. Uh, so if anyone is aware of any, uh, infrastructure damage, uh, to the borough, specifically Gettysburg Borough, please report that, uh, to, uh, my office, uh, so that we can get those damage reports into the county and maybe reclaim, uh, some money on the damage done. But I'm not aware of any, any damage reports.
Knocks some rocks out of Bream Alley wall. Can we get that paid for?
I don't know that we're gonna get six million out of that.
Let's document it. Let's go. Uh, that takes us to elected officials comments. Mayor Freeling, did you have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Bales?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Sanders? Mr. Berger?
Uh, I will mention, uh, National Night Out was a, it's a very nice event. Uh, we did get some of it in before the rain. Uh, came about six thirty, six forty-five, so we had an hour or so. Uh, nice community outreach with our law enforcement agencies around the area. Uh, we had Sergeant Evans and Prue there, Mackenzie Johnson, and, uh, Officer Wenrich organized it. He did a really good job, so kudos to our police department for that.
Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, Ms. Lawson?
Yes, I'd like to just make a public service announcement this evening for our ABCs, our authorities, boards, and commissions. Mrs. Butterfield and I co-chair, um, the, um, ABCs, and we accept applications from citizens. Mrs. Butterfield and I co-chair the ABCs, and we accept applications from citizens who either reside or work in the borough. The residency requirement differs with them. On our website, on our homepage, under ABCs, authorities, boards, and commissions, you can see the 10, 10 ABCs that are there, everything ranging from planning and zoning to Harb to stormwater. We have a number of applications in the queue. We interview people before they are seated on the ABC, one of the boards or commissions or authorities, and we always welcome application for that. Like I said, we have some in the queue already. We are anticipating a vacancy on one of the, one of the boards later this month, and so we will be looking for, to seat somebody on that, for that vacancy. But right now, we're fully stacked. We have about 60 private citizens that serve on the ABC, so we have 60 volunteers, most of them borough residents, and we really appreciate that. But we welcome more input into governance at that level. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Yes, for Public Works, Robbie, I think I saw some of your team, your small but mighty team on Washington Street today trimming some trees. They were very high up on some equipment. Thank you for doing that. What about those trees that are a little bit smaller, maybe some of those newer trees that have been planted recently? Do they, are they able to also trim those?
Yeah.
The ones that, you know, are literally smacking people in the face as they walk through our sidewalks?
Yeah.
And by people, I mean me and everyone else. And also, I appreciate that. Thank you. You can start with York Street. The other thing I wanted to ask is, are you working with the garden club on the beautiful hanging baskets every year? Is your team? Do you install the baskets?
No.
They have volunteers that install the baskets, I believe?
Actually, the--
Boy Scouts?
Muslman's Greenhouse installs the baskets because they plant the flowers in them, and they bring them in and install them, and they also remove them.
Got it. So I would need to reach out to them to discuss maybe the height of the baskets next year.
Well, you can discuss that with me, because I can tell them to raise them if they need to be raised.
Yes, they do. Thank you. Appreciate you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Butterfield? All right. Monday, the 26th, at 6:00 PM, will be the Annual Overdose Remembrance Walk, hosted by the Coalition on Overdose Awareness here in Adams County. It will start at the courthouse and process to the rec park, where there will be an event where if you have lost a loved one to overdose, you can have them honored if you'd like, or you can simply seek community with others who have lost somebody and those of us who have tried to do some good work with the recovery community as well. So that's Monday, the 26th, at 6:00 PM, starting at the Adams County Courthouse and concluding at the rec park. That takes us to the second public comment section of the evening. This one is not restricted to items on the agenda. Do, however, please use the podium. Limit yourself to five minutes, and we need your name and address of residence. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session.